The regular meeting of the Farver School Committee for January 11th at Cus Middle School. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguilera?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Harp?
Over here.
Mr. Hetzler?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Salute to the flag, please. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed to be acknowledged impermissible. Citizens input?
There's no one signed.
None tonight, thank you, Deb. Recognitions awards also, none tonight. Superintendent's report, Dr. Malone.
Mayor Coogan, this may take a little, would you like to do the student delegates before and take it out of order?
That's fine with me. I want to make sure we acknowledge our two student delegates that are with us tonight, Riley Kane and Soleil Gloss. Would either one of you like to add to our meeting tonight?
We're trying to talk about something in the next meeting. We're going to talk to the students at therapy, even talk with some of the middle school's kids and see what we can do to make Farver School Committee a better place.
That'd be great. We really appreciate you being here. Soleil, you got anything?
Um, we have to say, I'm just aware, we're going to talk to the city government and various schools. Thank you for having us.
Okay. No, appreciate you being here. Thank you. Dr. Malone.
Thank you. So, under the superintendent's report, it's one item, and that's to discuss our current reopening plan. As the committee is aware, we're currently in the modified hybrid model. We serve Cohort A in person, Cohorts C and D are remote, and Cohort B is fully virtual. We've been in that model since the second week of December. We made the decision to move to this model because of the uptick in cases. At that time, I said to the community that we would be returning on January 19th, Tuesday, following Martin Luther King Day. Since that time, as we've said since the beginning, we're monitoring data and we're making decisions based on what is in the best needs of students. On January 19th, we were scheduled to return to the full hybrid, the CD rotation, in grades K through eight. Nine through 12 was going to stay in that model in the modified hybrid up through February 1st. So, on the calendar I gave you, there's just one item which says February 1st, 2022, return to full hybrid. It's supposed to say grade nine through 12. So, you could just write that and keep that there. What I'd like to draw your attention to is a set of data where we can look at where we've been over the last several weeks and months of monitoring COVID-19. And the first piece of data is the community incident rate and the positivity rate. And you can see this past Thursday, we've been at the highest we've been. And that spread rate and the positivity rate continue to go in the opposite direction than we like. They have not plateaued yet to come down. So, I'm anticipating that these rates will hopefully plateau at some point, but it's most likely, based on the trend, that they'll continue to be at high levels. The second piece of data that I've provided you is a week-to-week breakdown of positive cases among staff and students. And you can also see an increase in students being tested positive for COVID and also staff. And really with the staff, you can see a huge increase, and that's been our experience the last few weeks. The next piece of data shows our overall instructional attendance rate, and we are averaging about 14 and a half percent of our teaching faculty is out on any given day right now as a result of both quarantine and positivity and then just others being sick. So, you know that staffing capacity has been a challenge in that regard. And then the final piece of data that I've given to you is both the student positive cases and the total number of quarantines amongst students. And you can see what that data shows, that it's, this past week, and we're anticipating that post-holiday spike that we had after Thanksgiving, and you can see that last week with students, that spike played itself out. It's the highest number of students positives that we've had. Now, granted, most of our spread is happening out in the community. It's not happening in school. And I think we've really done, Ken and his team, I want to thank all the teachers and the leaders and our nursing staff for everything that they've done to mitigate where we are. But, what I'm here to explain tonight is that based on these numbers and where we are right now, it does not make sense for us to return to the full hybrid on the 19th K to eight. So, that brings me to February 1st. Well, we could return with the nine through 12 as planned with the K to eight on February 1st, but we're still not expected to get the vaccine until some point in February. So, if I'm being realistic and honest with the members of the committee and the community, I think a more realistic date to get to, back to the full hybrid, the CD, so serving about 3,600 kids a day, right now we're serving about 1,400, is likely March 1st. And I'll tell you why. February is a tough month. We have a vacation in the middle of it, starting on the 13th through the 20th. So, there's two weeks ahead. If the data goes down, we could come back those two weeks. But as I said, it's unlikely, especially with the vaccine not being rolled out until February. So, where we are right now in the modified hybrid, we have consistency of instruction, technologically it's working, the engagement rates have been high, and student attendance is actually higher than it was in the past. So, if we stay in the current modified hybrid model through the next six weeks, that's what we're talking, it's six weeks, six instructional weeks, the likelihood of us getting the vaccine rolled out is strong. I've spoken with the mayor and, you know, I know they're working with the state and the federal government on that. The likelihood of us continuing to sustain the consistency of instruction is strong, and us continuing to do what we've done, maintaining the safety of the 1,400 students that we have, we can continue to do. So, this is not, you know, a decision that I've come to lightly. Again, we're using data, we're looking at the current scenario, and we're measuring the pros and cons. And for us, at this time, for me as the superintendent, the value in maintaining the current posture, given the rates that we have in the community, the spread that we're seeing amongst students and adults, and what's happening both statewide and nationally with the vaccine rollout, would lead me to say, well, February is not the safest month to come back either. Now, I could say, hey, we're going to come back on February 1st based on the data and be back in two weeks and say the data hasn't improved and we're out. But that's not leadership. Leadership's about saying, hey, here's the reality. And the reality is, it isn't pretty. And the reality is, it is unlikely that we will return to the full hybrid prior to March 1st. So, setting a target of March 1st, now granted, if the data changes and we get to, you know, all of a sudden it drops and we go down, I got a meeting coming up on February 8th. I can talk to the committee about coming back earlier than that. But it, I would be dishonest if I said to you, we're going to go week by week and just wing it. I think parents need a consistent date. I think we need, as educators, our teachers, our faculty and staff need to know that as well. And of course, the students do. And I want to get these guys back. I mean, you, I mean, we all know that connectivity is the lifeblood of development. And, you know, we want to get back to a place where I can get students back to start in the full hybrid, and then hopefully as things really get better, we get back into three-foot distancing and I get everyone back at some point before the end of the year. Now, that would be the goal. Concurrent with this timeline is I'm also meeting again with our counterparts in the FREA and talking to them about our MOU, about the synchronous learning and a couple other things. And another example is, you know, the Wednesdays. Originally, when we drafted our plan, Wednesday was to be a full remote day. Why? Well, we thought we needed the planning time, and we thought we needed the small group time, and we thought we needed the cleaning time. Turns out, we can do all that without that. So, when we return, hopefully we return five days a week, and that would be a value to everybody. And Wednesdays would be a regular day like Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday are. We'd still keep our rotational split. Now, that's, again, something that is for discussion around an MOU change, but those are just the kinds of things I'm thinking about. So, tonight, what I'm making a statement is that we're going to maintain our current posture in the modified hybrid. So, we're still in the hybrid model, it's the modified hybrid, and we're going to maintain that position for the next six weeks through March 1st unless the data shows a drastic improvement and we're able to get back earlier. We have a meeting coming up on February 8th. I'll share the same data presentation at that time. If things are safe to come back, we can come back the second half of that week. If not, again, we'll just keep staying till the March 1st date. I'll answer any questions that the committee may have.
Josh?
Tom, I have the same question. Well, yeah. Okay.
Tyler, you go next.
No, no.
And then Kev.
All right. Thank you, Jim. So, I mean, personally, it sounds like it's a sound plan, right, to work out based on data and all that. I mean, I have an issue with it. I have my kids, all my kids that are in the system. I'd rather just get back to school. I mean, I have a couple of reasons why I still have, like, one, we went, right, maybe March 1st, maybe this, we hope the vaccines are all, we don't really know how the vaccines are all, like, normal, active as we do now, but the way that's been rolled out across the country, it's kind of hodgepodge, it's not really rolling out as fast as we want it to. So, I don't know when that's going to happen. So, we say March 1st, then what happens? All of a sudden, it's April, then it's May, and then before you know it, we don't go back to school. And do we believe in the PPE? Right? You said it, the spread isn't happening here in our schools. Do we believe in the PPE? Well, if we believe in it and the spread's not happening in the schools, then why not get these kids in front of the teachers where they belong, where they're actually going to learn? I mean, I know they're learning at home now, but they're not learning as well as if they were in front of the teachers. At least, that's my opinion, and I'm sure most of us would agree. Students in Farver are in sites across the city every single day right now, the pods, they call them, right? Already. I was, my kids go to one of them. We go and there's 20, 30 kids in a room and they're all there, and they log in from there. So, if kids are already in groups across the city, then how come we can't have them in our schools? So, I understand your plan. I understand that we gave you the, you know, the authority to make that decision, and I know you are. I just wanted to voice my opinion and my concerns about it. With that, Aguilera, thank you.
Tom? So, I have three concerns, Superintendent. How are our substitute teachers holding up? What's going on?
It's been a challenge getting substitutes. We're all hands, meaning, I got parents teaching classes, we have some subs, we're using administrators to patch. I mean, you see the data with the folks that are out. We're also talking, you know, the, I also forgot to mention, the FCC RA expired, and that was the, the law, federal law expired on New Year's Eve that allowed, if you're quarantined, it's 10 days of time that you don't get your sick time deducted. That no longer exists. So, we're still talking with the, with our labor unions about, for those that are forced to quarantine, can they work from home? So, those conversations are happening. We're meeting on Wednesday to continue that dialogue. So, to me, we've done the best possible job we can to cover, and we're doing that, but it's all hands on deck. So, it's, I don't want to say it's because of substitute teachers that we're able to do it. It's a combo of subs plus all our parents, plus all our administrators, all covering to get it done.
Yeah, it's a slippery slope right now. I guess it is for all school districts. I think they're probably experiencing similar issues as far as that's concerned. So, I mean, March 1st seems to be quite a ways off. I know that February 1st is the beginning of the second half of the school year, so I'm just concerned about the kids who are still non-connected Wi-Fi, you know what I mean, that type of thing. What are we doing with that?
Well, we have everyone connected in terms of, you know, we've got, how many hotspots do we give out?
Our elementary kids, our middle school kids.
800 and something, yeah, devices. We don't, you know, we've, you know, gone back over the last four months and targeted every family that we haven't been able to engage with and worked with the state and all the agencies. So, I mean, we're feeling pretty good about connectivity in that regard.
All right, so I'm going to bring up my old saw one more time. I'm going to hammer MCAS, but I know that it's been, you know, revamped this year, and I know that it's not going to carry, you know, the same weight that it has in the past. But are teachers able to prepare the kids effectively with remote learning going on and get ready for the spring MCAS test?
So, so, the irony is, in the current model, kids are getting two and a half hours more instruction a week than in the CD rotation. So, I think they're getting consistent, strong instruction, albeit 9,000 of them or 8,500 of them aren't getting it in person at the moment. But I think that the level of instruction that's happening remotely is far superior than it was last year, you know, and even far superior than we had in the fall. I think there's, we've made huge progress on doing hybrid distance learning better, and I think that because of the modified hybrid, that week on, week off, so one week you got grade in person, the second week, it's limited the interaction because the teachers are teaching where it can't be synchronous all the time. So, now, the students have their teachers all day for that time. So, it's, it's been consistent. We've heard from parents that are very happy with the level of rigor that the kids are receiving, but it's not perfect. And I agree with Mr. Hetzler that, you know, we all want to be back in person. I want to get back in person as fast as I can. I just think, if I said to you, coming back on February 1st, nothing's changing between right now and February 1st. There'll still be no vaccine rollout, and you look at the trend in the spread rates, that will continue to go. So, for me to say, well, we'll come back on February 1st, I'll be saying on the last week in January, which is in two weeks, don't expect to come back on February 1st. That's why I wanted to give families and something, something consistent in terms of a deadline. Granted, I agree, March 1st, it's six instructional weeks away. It seems like a lifetime. I want the kids back too. I want them in person. Now, remember, we're only talking about, in the CD cycle, it's about 3,600 kids total, divide that by two, that's all that's coming back. So, it's, we're not talking about everybody. So, it's still a small number of kids, because we still have over 4,600, 4,700 families that pick fully remote, the full virtual Cohort B. So, I worry that for the limited period of time, if we came back earlier, kids are going to get less instruction per week than they're currently getting in the regular model. So, if we're talking about, and I know you're anti-test prep, but if we're talking about preparing kids through the, it would be beneficial to stay in the model that we're in because at least they're getting more hours of instruction. But, there is nothing that takes the place of in-person learning.
I've gotten some hints from some of our educators that the remote model is beginning to refine itself, so it's a lot better than it was last spring when we were first confronted with this. So, I'm hopeful that the remote thing, you know, will continue to refine itself and we continue to grow into it, you know, to some point where it's somewhat effective. Thank you, Aguilera.
Kev?
So, to the superintendent's point on the, when you're in full remote, you're actually getting more lifetime. I think that's something that is important to lay out there, and that's been going on for the whole year. So, the on a week, off a week thing isn't necessarily the greatest either. So, in a lot of cases, I think the consistency of the teacher being there with them the whole time, the less burdensome worry about the virus, there's a lot of sense behind just that remote learning is actually giving them more direct instruction than otherwise. But with that being said, my concern is the cohort that we're keeping in and the high needs and all that. So, can you or Mr. Lowish or somebody articulate how that's going? And if, you know, I just see these numbers getting really high, and I can put myself in the shoes of a teacher that's having to go in and have kids in front of them, to be more concerned about it than three weeks ago. At the same time, I'm curious to see, what are they getting for instruction based on the same thing we just talked about? Is there cases where the class, like if you have to quarantine a class, are those kids getting no instruction and no intervention? If somebody can articulate that, I don't know if it's you or Mr. Lowish, but.
Well, I'll let Mr. Lowish come up, but I'll make a couple comments. So, in Cohort A, we have our four-year-old program, early childhood, we have our Foundation L students, and we have our substantially separate special needs students, we have our CVTE at the high school shop students, and we have some McKinney-Vento students that have been identified as high needs in that category. So, it's about 1,400 kids. The instruction that kids are receiving, like, for example, on, I don't know, I think it was Friday, I tweeted out a video of a foundation classroom, young girl learning math, and she articulated what she was doing, and it was really powerful. It was a great video if you actually sit and watch how kids make meaning in math. Like, that is the value of that in-person instruction, closing those gaps. For sped kids, it's meeting their IEPs and their programs. Yes, we've had students in those classrooms test positive, we've had to shut classrooms down, we've had to manage that, provide the instruction while the kids are at home. It's not as perfect as we'd like, but we find the value in serving the high-needs kids. These are kids that we have to serve regardless, and it's almost impossible to serve in a fully remote model. Go ahead, Mr. Lowish.
Yeah, I think just to kind of lead off from that point, especially for a lot of our high-need students, it has shown that, you know, the challenge for them to engage remotely is significant. Even if we're providing alternative means of devices, whether it's an iPad versus a Chromebook, their ability really to be able to access remotely is significantly hindered. It also tremendous, requires a tremendous level of supervision at home for them to be able to stay engaged and stay in front of a device for this time period. You know, we've tried to be as flexible with our folks who have stayed home remotely, who are high need, who have medical needs as well, and, you know, we've gotten the feedback from parents that, you know, it's still such a challenge, that, you know, that a lot of our parents have seen that it just, it's the benefit of the need of being in person outweighs even sometimes what they think is the risk of them being in school versus, that they want their child's education to continue, so they prioritize it in that means. And like we said, it's really just outweighing the, you know, the benefit of being in person. For these kiddos, they're not able to access remotely effectively.
And how many kids out of the 1,400 are the, fit the description of what you just mentioned?
We have a significant amount. You know, all the sub-separate classrooms, it's debatable how many of those would really effectively access remotely. I think we would have, of the current kids who are in person, you know, if we really, really dove deep into it, we might say as high as 30% might be able to effectively engage remotely. We would have a significant amount of students who just wouldn't be getting any services or instruction. We've been doing a continuous outreach to the community to reengage students throughout this time, especially those who have been fully remote, to get them back on board for their related services, saying, you know, what can we do to be flexible, to meet your needs? And even that has really been a struggle over time for our kids who are fully remote. We've regained a significant amount, which I'm very proud of for our people in terms of their outreach and connecting with families, but it's been a struggle over these past four months.
So, in the last spring, when we had to go full remote, how did we meet the needs of the IEPs at that time?
Well, to the credit and some forward thinking, we, our folks had memberships to ASHA, which is the training organization, as well as our occupational therapists had a similar organization, the OTA, that provided them the training so they'd be able to deliver remote services under the guidelines. To their credit, all these folks jumped on, they did their modules so they could facilitate those services, so they had the accreditation in order to do so, move that forward. It was a matter of really that grassroots, you know, outreach, emailing, calling families from home, trying to get as much scheduled as possible so that we could get as many kids services as possible moving forward. And then also, you know, our teachers, you know, setting up their Google classrooms to make sure that they were able to try and reach kids as much as possible. And a lot of that also, we had parents that were trying to be more flexible at that point as well as saying, giving them the paper-based as well as the remote engagement option.
Yeah, I recall last year, Superintendent yourself saying how people had really done your man's work to get to that point to service them. But if that's what we did when we were in a full remote model last year, we also then therefore can't use the excuse now to say that we need them in school as much in order to service the IEP. Some of that argument doesn't wash out if we, we've done it before. So, it's not only about servicing the IEP, there's levels of an IEP in need of students. So, my point is, I think that there's situations that come up that we have kids that have to go home, and what do they do when they go home? So, if I'm in a classroom and I have to quarantine half my class, what instruction do those kids get if they're home?
Yep, and a lot of those teachers who have been in that situation for those entire classrooms thankfully have been very flexible and worked with the district and their schools in order to provide some form of remote instruction for their students. And a lot of them are doing either, you know, very small group or individualized sessions with students to get them some sort of service and level of engagement. One of the biggest pieces of feedback they've seen is that trying to do the whole group Google classroom with a classroom of students with high need just doesn't work. So, we can't say they're necessarily getting their full load of services because it's almost impossible. They need a very high level of attention, but they are trying to put as much possible out there. Some are also then, you know, leveraging their paras to do some small group work during these times and trying to get these kids as much face time and attention as possible and kind of move forward on their objectives in the best way they can. I think every remote teacher who has either, you know, had to do a quarantine period or even the full remote classrooms has said that, you know, this has been one of the most challenging experiences of their career.
No, I agree. My, what I'm talking about is, I'm a teacher and I have 17 kids in my classroom that are coming in to learn under this model. So, they would be coming in, if I have six or seven of them that because of a quarantine issue have to go home, what is the instruction that they get? Do they just go home and get no, because they can't go to the remote learning teacher, they can't go to the current teacher? So, they were sort of in limbo, and what instruction do they get for that entire day? Is it zero?
No, I think what a lot of our teachers have been doing is trying to be flexible in providing some live time for them while they're at home as well as making sure that they have their assignments uploaded to Google Classroom so they have access to it and the materials. You know, it's certainly not perfect because you have a mixed classroom of both in-person and some kids at home. and some kids at home at the same time. We've also had teachers who have been, you know, willing to livestream at the same time. That livestreaming option for our teachers who have felt the confidence and ability to do it, you know, does provide for that home and in-person piece. You know, given the size of sub-separate classrooms, we're not encountering too much of that, much of a split ratio like that. Certainly it has happened a few times, but our teachers, I think, have adapted and shown flexibility in order to meet the needs.
What does the MOA that we have signed say related to that issue?
Right now, in terms...
So the, our MOA says the livestreaming synchronous instruction is voluntary, and we've incentivized it. And we're going to be talking more about that on Wednesday when we meet with the FREA again.
But as it is now, it's sort of not incentivized?
Oh, it is.
It's actually against, is it against the MOA?
To mandate it, yeah. We didn't agree that livestreaming synchronous would be mandated.
No, I mean, in the situation like I just mentioned, if I was a teacher and I had six kids that had to go home on instruction, am I violating the tenor of, you could always volunteer to do everything, but does the MOA call for you not to?
No, no, the MOA, it's just, we didn't mandate it in the MOA. So that teacher can, of course, livestream. It makes things actually better and easier, but I can't make them do it.
Which then therefore is in the MOA saying that they're not supposed to?
No, 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 no. Let's make sure you get your semantics right. The MOA doesn't say you're not supposed to livestream. It says it's voluntary.
Right, so if I'm a teacher and I have that many students in my classroom and a third of them have to go home on quarantine, what do I, what do I do related to the MOA? Is it that I, do I not service the nine kids in front of me as much to go to the six? Or is it not addressed? Is it something that, do you understand what my concern is?
And Mr. Loesch just explained to you how we're using paras and teachers to try to create as much small group instruction outside of the classroom as we can. Some teachers are doing the full two-computer livestreaming. It's a, we have a mix of models that are happening. So those kids are still getting instruction, albeit it may not be at the level of the kids that are in-person. We're getting better at that as we do this, that's why this discussion is on Wednesday about what's the future? How do we get some more hours out of this? And is full livestream synchronous instruction for everyone the way to go? We're going to have that discussion.
Right. Maybe if I could ask that you, out of the kids that are quarantined, if they're getting zero, what's the percentage of them getting live instruction? If you could get us some data on that, I'd appreciate it because I'm just concerned that the same theory that we used before about if you're on two weeks of remote, you're getting the full teacher in front of you the whole time? When the kids are in quarantine, what are they, are they sort of for that seven or 10 days getting zero, you know, teacher in front of you, teacher-led instruction even remotely is my concern, especially those in that, this category we're talking about that, we're still trying to keep them in. I think it's something to certainly think about whether we should do something different with a certain pop, so maybe what I'm talking about is dividing the 1,400 into categories as well. So that, I agree that there's certain levels of need that a student can engage with at home, but I don't think that's the entire 1,400 students. I don't even think it's half of it, in my opinion. Maybe you could look at that and tell us that stuff. My last comment is just on, I hear what you're saying. I personally think that the committee should be voting on all of these things and not just leaving it to the superintendent to make the decision, although I do think you're using the data, you're doing everything that you said you were going to do at the beginning. The data's going to drive what we're doing, but I do think, as I mentioned last time, we should be more involved in the process than what we are. With that, I yield.
Mimi?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Malone, it's my understanding the first quarter data is out, correct their report cards, it was complete last week, is...
Is that true?
That is true. Do we have any data on the students? Have we identified any students that are not succeeding? I'm not talking about the students with the IEP or the 504 or talking our students that, let's say, have succeeded in years past and this year has been not so successful. Do we have any data? Have we, do you get that out?
I'm certain that you got some data. It's Dr. Malone's here right now.
Yeah, we have all the data when you, I mean, schools are working on it, then I think this is all part of the student support teams.
Right, have you seen any data? Like, what do you, what can you give us tonight by some of the numbers that you have seen?
At the secondary level, there's more failures.
Okay, and these are average students that no IEP, no 504?
It's tough to use the term average, but it, you know, I think the grades of this whole model, this whole year with the kids across the Commonwealth, the grades are down.
Okay, and I understand that.
I'll give you, I mean, we were talking earlier, I mean, things like college application rates, FAFSA forms, all that data's down. So, you know, I think we're seeing with this, and I can say this from experience, I got a ninth grader and a 12th grader at my house, motivation and morale has been down. So I think that's one of the reasons why we see some drop in data, although the kids that are participating, and if you look at the data of attendance, like today, Cohort C was at 90%. You know, that's been high. I mean, we've been averaging around 85%. So to see that is good, it's much better than it was when we were in the week on, week off in that, in terms of that engagement data. But I think you, what I can put together easily and send home is some analysis of grades and some analysis of those things. I have some analysis that Tracy, Dr. Curly put together on time and how much time, instructional time, and some of the things that Kevin was talking about that I can send out, hopefully I'll send out to you guys Friday in my email.
Right.
But that data, yeah, I'll send that to you.
I'd be really interested to see that. Also, I think my biggest, my next concern is K through 2, and I think you know that from our conversations in the past. I don't know if it'd be a good idea or maybe put a conversation on the table about phasing them in a little earlier than everybody else. I think after our highest need students, I think K through 2 falls in the next category in my opinion. I think we have to be a little more diligent in putting them first. And I hate to say first in front of every other student, but I think the K through 2 needs are vastly different from every other student in the school system. Is that something maybe that could be considered before much first if the numbers start getting a little better?
If the numbers get better and the vaccine rolls, I mean, we also have the adult issue, right? So the adult issue is, the impact on my teachers being out, doesn't matter what grade it is, right? So it's happening at all grades. We know that the spread rate internationally is lower with the youngest kids, right? So, I mean, so scientifically, would it make sense? The answer is, it could. The problem that I have is the way that February rolls out with that vacation in the middle to say, we'll bring K, K first and second back on December, I'm sorry, February 22nd? Is that the kind of thing, thinking that you're looking at?
Probably earlier, if the numbers...
We have, well, we have the vacation of 15th. Bring them back on the 8th, when I just talked about, there's no vaccine rollout for the adults yet. I mean, it's still unsafe. So, I mean, that's something I'll talk to you guys about on the 8th, but, you know, I don't see the value in that at that time on the 8th. But if the data does come down, as you just said, I mean, this is what I just said too, if we plateau and come down in the spread rates, we could be back on the 8th. And, you know, I'd give parents a week's notice or try to get, you know, a week's notice like on the 1st to say, hey, we're back on the 8th.
Ayil, thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just be brief, and I'll stop my comments by just saying that, you know, each decision that's made, you know, by the superintendent and also by this committee, you know, we've said it before, will never fit well with all of our families. And so I think the one thing that we've been consistent with is that we said that we would look at our numbers, our spread rate, and rely on the opinion of the medical professionals in terms of what posture we have our district in, and I think we've done that. And so it's probably going to look different to each family. It did when we were creating the reopening plan. You know, I'm looking at part of his numbers and, you know, going back to September 2nd, we had a percent positivity at 1.8, and here we are January 7th, and we're at 14.95%. So, you know, when you look at the average daily incident per 100,000 over the last 14 days going back to September 2nd, we were at 5.1% and now we're at 112.5%. And the reality is that we still haven't sort of reached the crest unfortunately with what we had been planning for, and that was a surge through the holidays. I think we're still unfortunately breaking daily records in terms of number of cases and deaths, or at least over the last week or so, I think we've surpassed that a couple of times. So if we were on the backside of this and the numbers were declining and we were back to where we were at the beginning of September, I think we would all agree that the best place for these kids and our staff would be in classrooms within-person education. What I will say is that, you know, as a parent who's observed the hybrid model, that week in which the teachers are teaching in-person with the other part of that cohort, the instruction is really inept. And I think you get educators who are trying to juggle teaching in-person and setting assignments for students who are at home, maybe trying to navigate some of the lessons on their own without that in-person instruction, without that ability to speak to the teachers about the concerns. And so I can say now that at least one of my children at home, the level of instruction, I think, is, and I made mention of it at the last meeting, I have nothing but accolades for those instructors, they're engaging, I can hear the lessons being presented, they're doing a fantastic job with it. And, you know, I would just ask that, Mr. Superintendent, you continue to use the data that you set out to use to sort of guide those decisions and that you obviously keep this committee in that conversation. Because the reality is, as Ms. Agia mentioned, you know, although I don't know that I want to get into the day-to-day stuff, but, and I'm not necessarily sure that that's what was being suggested, but I, you know, the communication with all of us about what we're hearing in the community, what we're seeing, and sort of having that ability to listen to committee members when you're making these decisions, I'd ask that you continue to do that for the sake of the district. And just lastly, you know, I know that we want to put students in before teachers, and for a number of our students, that's happening on a daily basis, and we still have educators who are nervous, who are wondering why we're staying in this posture for the remainder of the students that are out there, but for those that need a higher level of instruction, they're being asked to come in. And I know that I've heard personally that there are some out there that are concerned, so we have to weigh that into these decisions, and I think the posture that we're in now is a good posture. And I think the justification for staying in this posture for as long as you presented tonight makes sense. And obviously, if we hit that pinnacle with cases and spread rate and the numbers start to decrease, then I would hope that the superintendent would be making decisions to pivot, as you talked about during the reopening presentation, how this, we'd have the ability to pivot on a moment's notice to change the posture of the district. And if the numbers reflect that, then I certainly would support having students be in-person more than they are now. With that, I yield. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot has been covered and a lot has been asked that I wanted to ask. However, I do would like maybe, if they're willing to do it, the students that are here tonight, maybe give us some input as to what, you know, your friends are saying about going back to school. You know, I just kind of, and do you guys, do you all talk about that as far as, you know, being home instead of not being in front of the teacher?
There's definitely mixed opinions. Some people I've met don't even believe it's real. Like, there's, there's a number of students who are going out every weekend, doing their thing, living their daily lives, no mask on. Personally, my family's pretty strict about it, and I agree. This pandemic has taken millions of lives, and I'm just thinking, why rush back? I understand that for some grade levels, it's extremely important. K to 2, I can understand that, that's a huge, that three-year gap is extremely important to students' life, but the high school level, I don't, I can't see why we would rush back to a place that people's lives can be taken. It's just to the point of where me personally, my grandmother could have it, to where if her life was taken, I don't know what would happen. So why rush back to a place where it can affect lives for the, like, it could affect my life forever, and it could affect my friend's life, their family's life, and everyone's. So that's just my input. I can give a little bit more next month. I'm definitely going to look out to student government, as student body president. I'm going to make sure that all the students' voices are heard, and I want to make sure that we're doing the right thing as the school committee, as a city of Fall River, and so like.
Yeah, so just to go off of what Riley was saying, I definitely do agree on just questioning the urgency of coming back so soon because this is such a serious, like, manner, and it can affect many lives. I personally have a friend who is very high-risk, two friends that are extremely high-risk, and she's been in remote the entire time, but there's also that side that various you have mentioned is just the questioning education and how the teachers are teaching as well as how people are handling students who may be quarantined, who are maybe doing hybrid, and how they're getting their education through there. And personally, from the sense or the lens of being an AP student and needing like more, our academic rigor is a lot higher, and we feel like our teachers and what you were saying before about the statistics on how students are improving, I feel like that plays a very big factor because I've seen many and countless students who are so very successful, like academically, and they've seen like through the pandemic that it's gotten down a lot, and their grades are like nothing that I have seen before, especially like with me personally. So I feel like those are very important factors to keep in mind.
No, I thank you for that input from both of you.
Yeah, I agree. I think looking at how the teachers are also teaching individually would be a huge thing as well. There's a teacher I haven't actually had class time with. He definitely offers it to the point of where I have to reach out to him, but I'm only taking three classes for the rest of the year, and one of those classes, I haven't seen my teacher this term at all. That's affecting my grade level a lot in general. He just, yeah, I know he has a lot of busy work to do in general, and I'm not going to say his name, but it's definitely affecting my work ethic, my classmates' work ethic, and I'm just seeing, especially in that class, a lot of these kids are falling behind, and especially with a program like Ingenuity. It seems perfect, but if I'm going to be honest, it is not working for the students. It's extremely hard to just sit down and listen to a teacher across the screen and watch basically hours and hours of hours of just YouTube videos that I can look up on either Khan Academy, Google itself. I just feel like it's not really working with some of these teachers. And I feel like a lot of these teachers think, since we're home, we have more time. I'm still a working person, I still go to work four or five days a week. I'm still a working person. I still go to work four or five days a week. I don't, nothing's really changed where I have more time now that we're fully remote. Now I'm getting two hours worth of science homework, math homework, English homework, where before I wasn't even really getting homework when we were cohort A, I mean cohort C and D. I feel like if we can see how the teachers are teaching and seeing how that's affecting, one, the student's mental level, I feel like a lot of these kids, like you said, you're two, you're two, what is it? I can't think of a word. Yeah, you're two children. They're lacking motivation. I'm in that group.
Right.
Really hard to finish this year where there's, there doesn't seem like there's light at the end of the tunnel. Honestly, it just feels like the tunnel is just dark and we're just walking and that's really it.
I think that's real and every senior and junior that I've spoken with, both at at Durfey and then in my own kids' schools, it's frustrating because this is supposed to be the best year ever, right? And you guys have worked so hard and we've had such great last several years and, you know, we're building a new building. You were a major part of that and we're, but then we got this, you know, last 10 months where it has felt like we've been a tunnel and going slow and trying to motivate my own son, you know what I mean? And, you know, about the college application process and all of that stuff which he's which he's doing now, but then it's like, he's like, Dad, why don't we want to go to college? Sit in my basement again and do it online. And, you know, that's, I hear you and I feel for you. I get it.
Hey, Paul, you done?
No.
Go ahead, Paul.
And also too, and thank you both for that, for that input. I appreciate that. The other thing too, that Mr. Agia was talking about, the MOA, Mr. Malone, are the teachers actually, are they required to teach online whilst teaching in person?
No, they're not required.
Okay.
So it's voluntary to do synchronous instruction.
Okay, okay.
So that's live streaming. So while you're teaching with kids in front of you, simultaneously you have a group of kids at home on their computers. So some teachers do it very effectively and I think that's growing. We got a, it's happening more at the elementary and middle level than it is at the secondary level.
Okay.
But getting people familiar and comfortable with the technology is a part of the professional development plan.
Okay, and I just wanted to, what Mr. Corey said about the, everybody having a laptop and working from home, that's still, there's no?
Yeah, right now we have no issues.
No hiccups right now?
Nope.
Okay, all right. Also, the other thing too, Mr. Malone, is when the students come back, whether it's March or mid-February, however it might play out, will the, if the parent, in a cohort C and D, if the parent wants to keep that child home, the student, will they lose their classroom, their same classroom that they've been with, or will they have to, will they be in that same classroom?
They would lose their classroom because they would go into the cohort B teachers, right? I mean, that would be, because we couldn't have them stay in C and D if they went full remote.
If they're full remote, then they're assigned to somebody else, but the goal would be that they would be assigned to the class that they typically are assigned to.
Okay, so they do, they'll lose that, their classroom? That's what I mean. Correct?
Their spot, you're saying they'll lose their spot?
That's right. They will.
I think that if, things that are in person will be assigned to the classes. So if a student is in cohort B and wants to come back, then we'll have to see if there are spots available in those particular classes to assign them.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I yield.
Kev?
Just the, I couldn't hear Vice Chairman, Mr. Costa. When you had said the off-week, you had mentioned something about the off-week instruction. Were you saying it's good or bad? Like, I thought you said inept, but I might have been miss, I thought I heard you say inept, like not good, but then I thought you were saying how it's good, so I.
Right. It certainly pales in comparison to the fully remote they're in now. So when the hybrid model, when they weren't in school and they were home, they were doing more online, you know, for lack of a better word, busy work. And without the ability to connect with their teacher about what they were, either videos they were watching or materials they were asked to read and weigh in on, they couldn't do that until they went back into the other part of the hybrid schedule. And so for one week, they were face-to-face and instruction was occurring, but then on that opposite week where the teacher was teaching the other half of the hybrid model, those students were home in a sense, and I don't want to say flying blindly, but I think the posture we're in now with the everyday of school, they're before a teacher, it's not, you know, perfect because they're not in classroom with them, but it's a lot better than it had been.
On and off week.
The on and off stuff.
I agree. I just wanted to make sure I was catching what you said.
Yeah, maybe inept was too harsh, but I mean, the reality is, it's far better now that they're having that direct contact with their teachers and their teachers aren't sort of splitting their time one week on, one week off with a group of students. In some cases, they don't see that cohort or that group, depending on vacation and stuff. It could be weeks before they reconnect with that part of the cohort.
Yep.
So my personal belief is right now, it's not the greatest because they're not in class.
It's silent.
But at least there's that ability to connect day-to-day, except on Wednesdays there's a check-in, but for the most part, I think the teaching and learning is far better now in this posture than it was through the hybrid.
Got it. Thanks. My question, or my comment, was I agree with what Ms. Larrabee was talking about for the younger kids, for the younger students, five-year-olds, six-year-olds, seven-year-olds, like it's very difficult. It's one thing for a high school kid, they're home, they can get on the computer and it's not perfect, but at least they can do that. But I can only imagine what it's like to have five and six-year-olds trying to, you know, log in and do whatever kind of instruction. Credit to the teachers for trying their best to do all that stuff, but I think she was making some valid points. And to piggyback on that with what my comment was on the 1,400 that are in the high needs category, if we're saying that in spite of the numbers, as high as they are, the percentages and all that, we are still going to put those students and those teachers into the school in a hybrid setting. And like I said before, I don't think they're all the highest need special education. There's a certain number. I can't see why, like the youngest kids, however many that may be, aren't included in that, in that category now.
They are, the four-year-olds. It's 400, 325 of them. They're in there.
So the 400 are inside of the?
325 four-year-olds, yes.
So they're included in the high needs, what is it, cohort A?
Right. I'm sorry, it's a little less than 325. I think it's. Yeah, 3K. It's about 290.
Cohort A, the kids that are highest needs, we're including four-year-olds in that number.
Which we announced when we rolled out what that is.
I'm not disagreeing with you. What my comment is, is then if we can say that we have the needs for 300 four-year-olds, why can't we accommodate 600 five-year-olds?
It's because it's 900 and there isn't enough spots. So we'd only still be serving a fraction of the five-year-olds that we have.
And how do they break down? Like, do they?
Six-foot distance, like the cohort model.
How do they break down the five-year-olds? So if I have, you said you got 900 five-year-olds? Are they all?
This year we have a little less because of the, everyone across the state struggling with, because five-year-olds isn't compulsory attendance. You don't have to come to school. There hasn't been as many parents enroll their kids in kindergarten. So we're down, I think, 200. So we're at about 700 five-year-olds.
So Mike, and I'm just giving credit to Ms. Larrabee for bringing this up. If we're bringing in four-year-olds, if we're bringing in 700 other students that are not as needy in certain ways, they can engage remotely a lot better than a five-year-old. Why don't we take our neediest five-year-olds and put them in?
Who can engage better than five-year-olds? Our high-needs kids are high-needs kids for a reason.
I get it, but if you're, if you're 13 years old in eighth grade and you, you can be home by yourself, you know, at least trying to get on with a teacher, get on with a separate small group, you can do your therapy, you know, occupational, whatever, those children are the ones that I'm talking about that are much more easily able to engage remotely than a five-year-old. I don't see how that's even a debate.
I think you're confusing me. Tell me, please, what you're trying to ask so I can understand.
So let's say we're taking 1,400 in. I had already asked before, out of that 1,400, we're not talking about all students that are in the ASD program at Henry Law, let's say, or that type of student. So how many of those 1,400 are in that category?
Are in the sped number? Oh, how many sub-separate kids do we have? 400 and something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that gives you nine, so you've got 1,400, you take 400 off or 500 off, you take 300 twelve-year-olds, and then my point is, is I think we should be looking at potentially putting more students at the younger grades in rather than even worrying about when the older kids come back in. I think Ms. Larrabee made a valid point. I think it's something to look at.
We said we would. We said we would take a look at that and look at, she asked for a phased-in model. If it's something we could do, I said I'll take a look at it and we'll talk about it at the next meeting.
I heard you talking about February 22nd, a week earlier than the March 1st. I'm talking about now. Like, why would we not look, with the current cohort A adding some of our youngest population, to me makes sense to service some of those youngest kids with the cohort A, is basically what I'm suggesting.
Your opinion's well taken and thank you for giving it to me.
And I just had one other question and I can't think of what it was. Oh, Mr. Hetzel had talked about pods. You're talking about private? You're not talking about from the school, right?
Right, so student, four of a public school, students are able to go to multiple sites in Fall River while their parents go to work and they're in a setting where there are people that facilitate those students getting online and getting their coursework done.
And then, like, I just, excuse my ignorance, I don't know about that, but I'm sure there's socially-distanced masks, like there's some.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Just like we would have them in our schools. Same thing.
So they're going to that now?
Yes.
Right through.
Yep.
Okay, with that, I yield. Thank you.
I yield. I'm good. Thank you.
And we all said, yeah, I just got a couple of comments. I look at this data quite differently than some of the people. Fall River's data is popping along, but if you look at the sheet he gave us, the number of students positive newly reported went from 15 on 1224 to 49 on 18, and they hadn't been in school in 14 days. The teachers follow a similar trend. They went from 21 on 1224 to 56. So those people were not getting it in the schools. They were getting it at home or out in the community and they brought it back to the schools.
That's what we're saying to you. It happens, they bring it back into the schools and that's how they get the spread.
But I believe that out in the community is more dangerous than the schools.
But they come into school for.
But I think the community is more dangerous than the schools.
This is the point of why lockdowns work internationally.
Lockdowns work internationally. I don't know that one either. My point is, I have no problem with what Kevin and Mimi are saying about getting the younger kids in sooner rather than later. And I was supporting what Riley said until he got to the second part of it because I believe that that's what's happening to our students. They're learning a life, if he wasn't going with the work, he'd be getting more and more isolated. He wouldn't be interacting with his friends as much. Their school adventure, which is what they're on right now, is going to be diminished. I worry about the long-term effects because I have a lot of my other students that are doing the exact same thing in college now. And I don't know, you know, as you said, college apps are down, FASF are down, colleges are scrambling to find students right now. I just hope this malaise that's settled over us because of COVID snaps through and we get back on where we belong. I was pleased last year when we got to do our graduation and I look forward to these kids having some kind of semblance at the end of the year with vaccines and whatever it takes, but I still believe that the schools are generally safe. I think that's where those kids belong as much as possible. And, you know, those tales are going to be all over the state because these numbers are just booming everywhere. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask, Mr. Chairman, one more question?
Sure.
I remembered what the one question was. Sorry.
You're killing me.
If we could just get a response, not necessarily right now, but what the young man to my left was talking about, that not seeing a teacher for the whole year, like that's concerning. If we can just get either the background on that, whatever, every student should see teachers. I think we all agree.
Yeah.
But if there's cases where that's an anomaly, we can't have that. So, thank you.
I'll put it in the Friday email.
Got it. Thanks.
Thanks, Riley. I liked what you said. You didn't sound like me the first half. The second half you did. All right. Thanks, everybody. What do we got next? We have two sets of minutes, 1214 facilities and operations subcommittee. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. We also have a January 11th regular meeting of the school committee. I'm looking for a motion in a second.
Make a motion.
It's a point of order, Mr. Chairman. I don't have that on our agenda.
I am apologizing. It carried to the second page. My fault. Approval of travel request, number seven. We have none with us tonight. Acceptance of donations, Dr. Malone.
First, accept them and then I'll do, read them.
Okay, I have a motion.
Motion to approve, place on file.
Second.
Second, Dr. Malone. Oh, please call the roll. I'm sorry, I would have forgot that too.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, Kev.
I missed it. On my agenda here, I have regular meeting minutes.
I did, January 11th, but they said it was the 1214 subcommittee and on the second page I had what you said, but I thought.
That's what I made a motion on, was that second page one, January 11th regular meeting?
I thought that's what I read, but then they said there's only one.
Subject is 6.1. It's approval of minutes, facilities.
Turn the page, that's at the top.
That's this meeting. If you notice on all of the.
I got you, buddy. She's right. That's the 11th. That's today, Kev. You and I have both lost.
Yeah, that's today's thing, yeah.
We can't approve until we finish the meeting. Go ahead.
All right. From Meditech to the Fall River Public Schools, $15,000. From Staples and Fall River to Resiliency Prep Academy, a welcome banner. Thank you to our philanthropic supporters.
Thank you, Dr. Malone. Number nine, approval of contracts. Do we have any questions on any contracts here? I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Motion to approve contracts.
I have a motion in a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question, if I may.
Mr. Costa?
Thank you. If I can just ask, I see the ESA grant is being used for some funding with technology for a server, which, you know, my recollection is it would fall within the purview of that grant. Can we just sit the, either in a Friday email or at the next meeting or just get a balance on that ESA grant?
Yep.
I'd appreciate it. Thank you. I yield, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Approval of grants. We have a few grants listed here today. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
So moved.
A second.
I have a motion in a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Committee of the whole, number 11. 11.1 is a vote to approve the election of a vice chairman of the Farver School Committee.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mark Costa as vice president of the school committee.
Second and second.
Do I have any other nominations? Vice chair.
What did they say?
You said vice president.
Vice chair. Sorry, Mr. President.
Okay. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Congratulations. Any comments?
Just briefly, I want to just thank each and every one of my colleagues for their vote of confidence here tonight. Something, it's a role within our committee I don't take lightly. It's been a privilege to serve in this role as your vice chairman for almost 13 years. And so I've enjoyed the opportunity to mentor some of the new members over the years and to provide historical perspective to members that I've served with in the past and serve with now. This committee has dealt with a number of extremely difficult situations and issues This committee has dealt with a number of extremely difficult situations and issues with COVID- nineteen this upcoming school year, and I can't say enough about the fact that each meeting, it's done with a level of professionalism and decorum. Proud of each and every one of you for stating your opinions and your thoughts on the issues and advocating for all of our children and parents and teachers in this district, and I just ask that we continue to do that, that good work. And thank you again for your vote. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Congratulations. Yeah, Mr. Costa? Eleven point two is a second read and vote to approve superintendent's recommended budget priorities for FY twenty-two as presented by Dr. Matthew Malone.
I haven't had any comments from the members of committee in the past month. I think these are well-rounded goals and priorities for the budget that we've begun to build, and I have asked for, if the committee allows, for a special meeting in February where I could present the budget in the second half of February, but that's not part of this, I know. But I asked for the committee's approval of the priorities, so we can get into the work and come forth with a very good, strong budget proposal.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Kev?
So the only two things, I'm looking at stuff that, on the second section, instructional technology, student information. So I agree with what's here. We've been talking about this for a while, I want to say a couple of meetings ago, about the number one, human capital to support tech integration. Do we need more people now? So with the fact of what we're dealing with, you know, I think we could always use more.
Yeah.
If, in my opinion, we, if, I like this as a piece, but quite honestly, I think we need it now more than ever. I would personally, knowing that we have some money in reserves and all that, why prolong hiring? Why don't we just look at hiring those folks now, so that we can staff up, because the spring is going to need more. If everybody stays remote, I would personally like to keep it on here, but also encourage you to bring forward some needs. You have a little bit of flexibility in the contingency, but I'll tell you, as one member, I'd vote for that right now to add more staff to the tech department, because we need it.
So it's something we need, and when we talk about integration, it's both the instructional side with the teachers, but also the operational sides with the wires and the pliers. So, I mean, it's a critical need. We were going to invest pretty aggressively in my proposal. So, I mean, if, you know, I do appreciate the committee always being open to hear concerns. So if this is something that we could take a shot at, and I could identify how, I'd like to bring maybe something forward in February to say, here's what I'd like to do, and get the committee's thoughts on it at that time.
Personally, I agree, and you jumped the gun on, my other asterisk was on the last one, tech hardware replacement and upgrades. We just got an email from you, one of the schools was kind of either going down, or like, we probably have two or three schools that are terrible.
Green Elementary School, it's an old system. We're going to totally redo the system. Parts have been ordered. It's going to be about a fifty-seven, sixty thousand dollar cost around, yeah. And we're going to do it on February vacation ourselves. We have a plan in place. There's a Band-Aid to get us through there, but the whole thing has to be done. Parts have been ordered. Takes a little while, but you're right. This is stuff that we have to do one time cost, and we could use the CARES money, of course, to do that.
I can tell you, I'm, personally, I'm full support of those, especially at the oldest places, where we know we're going to need it anyway, and we need it. So you have my support on this whole thing, but more importantly, those two pieces, if you can come back, appreciate it.
I'll be in February eighth.
I yield.
Well, Tommy?
Yeah, Mr. Superintendent, on your priorities, I know that when we gear up again to have all our kids back in programs, back in school, I mean, has the administration anticipated, you know, some of the issues that may present themselves, you know, when the kids attend school fully again? I'm talking about primarily social-emotional issues, and maybe, I'm curious as to what our staff is talking about right now, what they may project into the future.
So we know we're going to have needs around social-emotional with second language learners in terms of capacity. So the bilingual Saks is something that I'm looking at investing in the budget as we think about what we're going to need rolling forward. More community facilitators to work with families, those kinds of things, all the stuff that we talked about with the Student Opportunity Act.
Right.
So really getting deep into that, and then, you know, the rolling out more seats for five-year-olds, I mean, I'm sorry, for four-year-olds, those kinds of things. So the answer to your question is, yes, this is something that superintendents are talking about, our team's talking about, staff's talking about, and we're going to, you know, we've been very clear that we're going to invest in needs to continue to propel the system forward, to have all the stuff we need in place.
Thank you. I yield.
Okay, I got a motion in a second. You want to give me a call, Deb, please?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yep. Eleven point three is a discussion and vote to approve the submission of the statement of the interest.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
Mayor? I'd like to make a motion, but it's got to be detailed in nature, so.
Do you want to do it before this one?
No, no, it is this one.
Oh.
The SBA requires specific language in the committee's motion.
Okay.
I'm just asking, it would be at the time to be recognized.
Vice Chairman Costa, read the motion.
Thank you. Motion is, having convened in an open meeting on January eleventh, twenty twenty-one, prior to the closing date, the School Committee of the City of Fall River, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit a Massachusetts School Building Authority Statement of Interest Form dated February sixth, twenty twenty-one, for the William J. Wiley School located at twenty-five eighty-five North Main Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priorities, categories for which an application may be submitted to the Mass School Building Authority in the future. Replacement, renovation, or modernization of school systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. The project will be for a request of a new roof, two boilers, and complete window and door replacement. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the City of Fall River or the Fall River Public School District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. I'd like to make that in a form of a motion here this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? I just, what's going on with Wiley there? Ken, please?
So the plan with Wiley would be for expansion of Stone School when we start seeing some uptick, as we probably will in the near future. It has other capacities. The building is a small middle, elementary school, nine rooms. So we wouldn't want to turn it into a neighborhood school. It's a little small for that. But it will allow us to use it as an overflow, both for Stone and we could do K or pre-K in that building.
It sounds good. It's still a nice old building. I love what's going on with Watson and Tansy. I have got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Kev?
Just a quick question. So that's been closed for a while, so it's got to be fully coded?
Right. So basically, MSBA does not get involved in any ADA compliance. So what we would do with that building is exactly what we would do with the Westall. It's a much smaller building, so the dollar figure for that building is a lot less than Westall. But we would do a request to MSBA for this funding. If that comes to fruition, then we would apply for a waiver, an ADA waiver, as we did with the Westall, I'm sorry, with the Watson. And on obtaining that waiver, we would move forward with the project. MSBA would leave the project as it is, and we would fulfill the second half of the project, which would be a ramp, elevator, and anything else to bring that building up to code.
What does that cost? You know, what that costs?
For the Watson, that cost is four point nine million to bring that building up to handicap accessibility.
And the same thing?
This would be, this would be quite a bit less because of the size. There's quite a bit of size difference. It's
Yeah.
Almost half the size.
I'm not opposed to improving things, but we need to see the whole picture. So if we got, how much money would be with the windows and, that we'd be reimbursed for?
It's an eighty-twenty split. It's a full eighty-twenty. So my guess is we would probably be looking at three and a half million, twenty percent of that.
And then we would have to pay the whole five-point something for code?
And on the code side, we would pay the difference, wouldn't be, whatever that number would be. It's, as I said, the size difference. It's a two-story building as opposed to a three.
But I'm saying, would they reimburse you for that, is what I'm saying?
No reimbursement on the city side. No reimbursement on the ADA side.
So the way I'm looking at it is, you take the five million that we've got to spend to get it up to code. You spend, let's say, one million just for, you know, that's six million dollars in real money. For six million dollars, we can get a hell of a nice building compared to what we'd spend in a Wiley.
I don't, can I say something, Kev?
Absolutely.
I don't think that's what he said. I thought he said he's spending three point nine on Watson.
So on Watson, we're spending ten point two.
Right, but on the ADA stuff that Kevin's referring to?
It's four point nine. On the second half of, on the second half of Watson, it's about four point nine million.
So what, guessing, what did you think the ADA stuff would be on Wiley?
Probably three million.
Yeah, I don't think it was five, Kev. I thought it was three.
No, what I'm saying is, the Watson, let's say, we're getting no reimbursement, you said, on the ADA stuff.
Right, correct.
So you, or the city?
Three.
Is going to pay five million for Watson coming up.
For Wiley?
No, but I'm just saying.
Oh, Watson's first, you're right. Yeah, Watson's first.
So now, if you look at what, what does the city have capacity to do to just keep giving away money? Not giving away, but you get what I'm saying.
Yeah, I know, I know.
So at Watson, that's not even before the council yet, right, because that's phase two.
It'll be probably in two weeks.
Five million?
Yeah, just about.
Let's say it's five million. Full hundred, no reimbursement, that's full. Add that to Wiley, we're going to have three million. Let's just call it three million. What kind of building can we get for three million dollars that's not the Wiley?
None.
None, yeah.
For three million dollars, we can't buy, we can't get a better building than?
We cannot. Where are we going to get that? We own the land, so we have a land issue.
Yep.
So the only property that the city owns is Globe Street, which is the old Stone School, and this one. Other than that, we don't have any land available to us to build a school on, so we have the land purchase, and then the whole process of school construction. An addition to a school like Tansy for two, four, for six classrooms would cost us upwards of four and a half million, five million? That's in addition to an existing school with all of its utilities and everything. So I can't imagine us being able to build, build anything.
I'm not suggesting build. I'm not going to go, and public just tell you to go look at another facility that's in current operation, or was a school, things like that. We're talking millions of dollars here.
But we're also, so I, about three, three years ago now, we walked to the old Dominican Academy, which was Atlantis, and we walked through that building, five stories. That's a three-unit school. I don't know what the rental is. At the time, that building was for sale for seven hundred thousand. That is an antiquated building. That would be like us trying to move into, well, that would be like us not doing any improvements in Watson. Those, that's the buildings that are available out there for sale. They are, they are almost what we have in some respect. I, if there's something out there that I don't know about, I don't know. I personally believe that it's a very difficult buy for that kind of money, to have a school that, as I said, when we're done with Watson, that, that school will be state-of-the-art for a building that's a hundred years old. And Wiley is going to be in the same situation once those improvements are finished. The difference between the two is, one is a one-unit school and the other's a two, but those are, that'll be a quality building. And Westall, the same, the same situation. I think the land piece is a huge piece in the location, but I, I know what you're saying. That there could possibly be structures out there that we would be able to purchase. I just don't know if they would be acceptable as classroom space, and if we would still have to spend money on a building.
Yep, I just think cost-benefit analysis, you know, I think for that, that's a lot of money to not get reimbursed, is my only point. And whether it's the five million in Watson, I get it, we got a lot of reimbursement, but let's just call it like it is. Where, the city's going to fund, may fund, I guess, I don't even know that, but five million dollars straight up, no reimbursement from the state. The same thing on this, so I'm in favor of going forward with the next step here, because I think this is part of the process, but also I'd like to have conversations about any other options, because if there's cheaper options, I think for the good of the city, we should go with that. With that, I yield.
Anything further? Tommy was next, then, Mark.
Yeah, Ken, in regard to Wiley, I'm in favor of fixing the school up. I think it's a great idea. It's an asset to our, to the buildings we have already. My question is, as we fix that school up, you mentioned two, two ideas. Is it going to be an extension of Westall for a high-special-needs population? Or is it going to be for early education as we ramp up our early, you know, our pre-K education in the district?
Well, the issue, it's nine rooms, so basically, we would have choices. The, we wouldn't be able to use it for a pre-K, but we could use it for a K. So it would give us an overflow for a K school, or any overflow from any other building.
But the two, but the two, the two ideas here for a, in a real special-needs school or a K school, we're not going to fuse two programs into one.
No, no, it would be, it would be one or the other.
It would be either or.
Yeah, one, either or. And depending on the population at Stone, as to whether or not it would be Stones, you know, where we would put Stone.
So my question to the superintendent, is that something that we would determine later on as the project becomes, you know, closer?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just say, I'm going to support it. It's a statement of interest at this point. Basically, just dipping our toe, I guess, in the process and in the pool, offering up some level of interest in this project. So it's premature right now to talk about, I think, what the total cost would be. I agree with Mr. Agia, though, that I would hope that the administration would come back and provide the School Committee with a sense of the borrowing capacity on the city side. I know, obviously, this would be a capital improvement project, so the city more likely than not would bond for this money over a period of time. You know, I remember conversations with Ms. Sahadi about how much debt the city carries and what's expected to come off the debt services over the next several years. So this potentially could fit into a situation where debt's coming off the rolls on the city side, and this may be something that fits within the capacity that the city looks to borrow for. So there's still some moving pieces. I would just ask that as we get closer and we make a final commitment to this, that obviously, I know you've had conversations with Ms. Sahadi, that you bring that information back to us, or do we get something from the city financial team in terms of where this would fit into debt services for the big picture? Because I think what Mr. Agia is getting at is, is that that's a lot of money to spend on one nine-classroom school that the city may use to do something with one of its existing buildings, not necessarily an educational facility, but it could be a fire station, it could be, you know, something other, another public building. So, you know, I think the city's been wise in determining sort of how to carve out a percentage of the debt service so that entities get a fair amount of borrowing under the city's cap. But if you could bring that back forward, bring that back to us at a future date, I'd appreciate that. So with that, I yield. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I got a roll call, Deb, please?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Eleven point four is a discussion and vote to approve the plan for the Pace Center and the Auditorium Building as referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee. Mr. Pacheco? Do I have a, let's do this first. Do I have a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Mr. Pacheco?
So the document that you have is Chapter thirty-four Code Review. Basically, what it does is it looks at the existing conditions of the building, and moving forward, there are some suggestions and some narrative that would go along with that, those code improvements. So that building currently is not a standalone building, as long as it's connected to the main derpy. It falls under all of the rules and regulations based on the years it was, the year it was built and occupied and its use. Moving it, once it is separated from the school building, it may have an educational purpose. However, the overall purpose of that building would be more office space and entertainment as far as the auditorium. So as you, as you thumb through it, basically, it's laying out the deficiencies of the building. one being fire suppression, a second one being fire alarm system. It does not have a freestanding fire alarm system. It is all tied into Durfee. When the alarms go off at that building, obviously, it's setting off the entire building. That will change probably sometime mid-July, possibly August, when that building is, is scheduled for demo. So, once that happens, that building has some needs in order to keep it alive. The building already has a heating system that's housed in that building. It does not have air conditioning. However, I, I refresh your memory that we bought two, the city purchased two chillers for Durfee High School about a year ago, two years ago now, and they were sized as two rather than one, so that we'd be able to split those units up and be able to use them. It was a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar purchase. One of those chillers is going to go to this building. So, we do have the chiller itself, which was the one hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar expense. However, it would have to be installed. The other chiller is going to be used at the Green School. Again, we're using that product that was only two years old. So that piece is relatively an easy fix. It's not as, as, as in-depth as some of the other work will be. Fire system will have to be a complete fire system, put in in phases. The fire department, along with the building department, is working with us to see how we can phase that, that piece into our plans for the construction and work into this building. That building currently houses the parent information center, and it will house some of our back office people, along with our special needs department in total, which is currently housed above the cafeteria at Durfee. So, our immediate need in that building would be to move that particular piece over to this as soon as we're ready to do the demo of the school. In depth, in, in this document, you'll also see that the building will require an electrical upgrade. So the building is not currently a standalone building as far as its electrical needs. It's not a standalone building as far as its infrastructure for technology. Some of that work has been done by National Grid in preparation for this. New poles put in on Widemo Street, and a new service will be brought down as soon as we're ready to accept that. So the building, we do have some preliminary ideas. What this highlights is some approximate costs, but also it has in it the stuff that we would absolutely positively have to do in order to keep that building alive. And the intent from day one, from the city side, was that that building would be a standalone building. We weren't going to demo it. We were going to seek grants in order to, to repair that building and bring that building up to, up to code. But those grants require certain, certain work on our side, which is making sure that fifty percent of that building remains for the arts and entertainment.
Um, Kevin?
Just the question on the, so we're going to keep it as an educational institution, so it's not triggering, I think I read in there, it's not triggering all kinds of.
So some of, right, so we'll try and keep it as educational as we possibly can, and we don't need to, there's not a lot we have to do to, to do that. So the building will not necessarily house students every day, but the, Durfee students will have the ability to, to use the auditorium.
So that we don't have to go to a full.
Exactly, right.
That was one of my first concerns. The second was, based on the conversation we just had, is there any access to make classrooms for kindergarten, let's say, in Neville?
We haven't looked at that because of the needs of moving people into that building and the amount of space that we would need. But I can, I could come back to this committee with, with what we have.
We were just talking about this, and we're going to fix these buildings for offices. Maybe we can incorporate kindergarten classrooms up there, or pre-K, or something like that. Where are the people coming from? So where's special ed now?
Second floor, Durfee.
And what is the other agency that's moving?
So it would be back office stuff, so some of the stuff at two ninety, we would be moving out of two ninety.
And what's the rationale for that?
To allow that building to be educational and not necessarily dual-purpose. We, we have an entire floor that's dedicated to back office right now. That's an entire floor that we can't use for education.
But we also have three floors or four floors that.
We have two that are, and the fifth floor has not been usable until this year, because of the new roofs.
So, just thinking aloud, but, I mean, when you add this together, like, I don't think there's a need, from at least my perspective, of rushing those, the special ed department out of this. Two ninety rock on the second floor is not a big deal to.
Well, the edu, the, the special needs department has to move.
I'm just saying, if we had room in the other, well, let's say it was more beneficial for us, because classroom space is important. To use the Durfee piece for the classrooms, and we could use some of our other buildings, like two ninety, to house other departments if need be. Just a thought to keep it on.
Sure.
We all look into for space, but it might make sense.
We can do that. We can look at that, absolutely.
Anything further? Roll, Tom?
I'm going to withdraw my second on that, Mr. Chair.
I'll second it.
Okay. I have a motion, a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Hudson made the motion.
Mr. Hudson made the motion.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
I have a second from Kevin. Thank you, Kevin. Deb, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Epstein.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Epstein.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mary Cogan?
Yep.
Stay there, Ken. Discussion and vote to approve the athletic fields infrastructure as referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee and presented by Ken Pacheco.
I saw moved to make that motion, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion.
Seconded.
I have a motion, a second. Ken, please.
Sure. So, in, in a matter of six months, Durfee will be just about wrapped up and ready for us to move into. And we are looking at some fields that are in pretty rough shape, that are going to need improvement. And looking at all of the, all of the land, so to speak, that we lost, and the fields that we lost during construction, by trying to fit everything on the lot. So sixty-six acres of land, we have a, a, a one building there that's just about five hundred and forty-three thousand square feet, and we're building another building, four hundred thousand square feet, and we had to take some land in order to do that simultaneously. So, when the building does get demolished, it's going to create some area for fields. We do have one field in the project, which is a multipurpose field, which, on the south side of the, of the school, near Spencer Borden. We also have eight tennis courts that will be built on that upper tier, so that is part of the project. The grass field and the tennis courts. On the existing land that's left, we have a baseball field that is very difficult to play on before May, which is a problem since high school sports starts a little earlier than that, our spring sport. So, most of the time, we can't use that field until, as I said, May, and that season starts in April. It requires raising that field, getting it out of the wetland area, and providing some drainage on the backside of that field in order to keep that area dry and usable. There is an, an attached document from Traverse, which is the company that's doing the current landscape architecture work at, at Durfee. It's about one point eight million dollars worth of work. I'm, I'm sorry, that may not be the document that's in there. The document that's in there is, is for the study. It's an eighty-eight thousand dollar document. And that basically is up to construction design, so it's studying construction design for the baseball field only. What I'm asking is for a complete study of the entire existing land, fields, existing fields, and the possibility of adding a field, a JV baseball field, to the property. What I'm also looking at is a phased approach. We tried this once at the, at the current Durfee, and we got as far as, as a football field and a practice field and the tennis courts. And we didn't, we didn't make any headway after that. What, what this is, what this would look at is laying out all the fields and listing them by priorities, starting with the baseball field as the number-one priority, so that we would, we would have a Division One baseball field. Second, or probably part of that Phase One, my suggestion would be that we move the, move to make the field, that all-purpose field, which is part of the project, to an artificial surface also. So the baseball field would be artificial. This new field would be an artificial surface, which allows us more playability and also allows us to have a rental capability that would fund future carpet replacements on, on all of our fields. That would be, what I would be looking at as a Phase One. A Phase Two would be making sure that we keep all of our Title I requirements in place, making sure that the male and female population at Durfee is allowed to have equal access to fields of equal quality. So we would be sure that we would, the upper field, that new field that hasn't been built yet, would have a varsity softball field built onto the carpet. And then, the field could either be used for soccer, or field hockey, or lacrosse up on top. The lower fields, which are in back of Lot C, which is the new lot, the new parking lot towards the Trade Winds, those fields in the back there, we would try and get a JV baseball field in there, along with a JV softball field. Again, using carpet. Also, we need to replace the football field and the practice field. Those carpets are, have exceeded their life expectancy, and they need to be replaced. So overall, we would be looking at all artificial surfaces on all our playing fields, which will allow us to use those fields a lot more than we can currently because of weather and, and conditions of the fields. And setting that out as, as a two-to-three-year phase project to have those fields completed by twenty, uh, six, yeah, twenty, twenty-four.
Any questions? Tom?
Kenny, I'm really excited about the future plans for all of these fields. It's difficult for me to be in this position and to envision it. Is there any way that you can maybe create a chart of, of the land, you know, and where the proposed fields may be, or just so that we can get a, a visual?
Sure.
On it, one way or another? Because I'm a little bit confused in our discussions about the baseball field in the past. I wasn't sure we were getting a baseball field. Now, we're getting a baseball field.
Well, it's not part of the project, so none of this is part of the project.
All right.
This is, this is a standalone piece, and what, what this request is, is to do exactly what you're asking. It's to get renderings of what it's going to look like, site plan of where they're going to be, and a schematic design which will give us the ability to get a cost of each item. And then we can break those items down into the phases that we need to do them in.
So could you present that to us with the, with the visuals, so that we could have?
I can. The only thing is, this is a request for the money to get that.
Yeah.
So I, what I need is, I need an approval here to move this to the next point, which will be renderings and schematic design.
Sure. Thank you, Ayo.
Kevin?
Yeah, so it's funny you talk about the picture. If you look at the pretty pictures of the new Durfee, everything's nice in color and everything beautiful, except for the baseball field's shaded. And that's what first, a year ago, it got me puffed up with, why is that shaded and not full? So, I agree with you, we need to see it to get there. My concern is the money, and where the money's going to come from to, to bond this stuff. So, Mr. Costa had mentioned about asking the mayor or the city to come up with something. I was told, I was here with everybody during budget time, that everything's on hold. And I don't want to say that we're going to, I'm definitely in support of this, but at the same time, how are we going to pay for it if it gets done? So, I don't know if you have any thought on that, Mr. Mayor, like.
I'm going to ask you for the money, Kevin.
You're going to be out of luck if you're.
We'll get the proposal, and we'll go forward from there. Things are changing all the time, and we'll see what, we see what ends up.
So it's not shut off, it's just, let's see what happens. As far as, you're actually in favor of at least looking into getting this, so we're not going to be wasting money if we approve this and it costs us?
No, I, I.
Five hundred thousand.
No, no, no. Obviously, this is all work that needs to be done. I don't, I mean, there's not, I don't know what we're going to do. Have a, a, a new school like that surrounded by dirt? I don't really know how that would work. But we have to find a way around it, and we, with your expertise and the committee, we can get this done.
Yeah, you show me that city budget, I'll.
That's, I didn't say go there. I didn't say go there.
Well, my only question or concern on this is, the current baseball field, the one that's underwater all the time?
Yes.
Is, that's not even playable now, so if we.
My, my hope, my hope would be that we can convince the chairman, if he's not listening right now, to keep it quiet. But, to convince him to move the first phase of this through, and come up with some creative financing in order to make that happen. And then, we'll move on to the rest of the project, because right now, the, the field that has to be done is the baseball field. Because our choice is North Park.
Yep.
And it would be really nice if Durfee played at Durfee. So, we could, and again, we can move one piece of the project forward without moving the whole piece. But, but I would really like this particular thing to be part of that, because the drainage on the property right now is, is really good, up to our playing fields. So what I'd like to do is incorporate all the money we've spent building the high school and all of that drainage infrastructure that's been put in place to allow the rest of this to tie into that and to, excuse the term, drain the swamp.
But it's, you're talking about in sixty to ninety days, this is going to get done?
I would think that, in maximum, well, you will not have a playing field this year. There is no way we could have a baseball field this year, but I'm saying that the twenty, the twenty-twenty-two baseball team could play on the new field.
So the current spring season is coming up, is.
The spring season's coming up now, and it's North Park.
All right, because have you been by there?
I have.
Yeah, so I think we need to.
It worked last, last year. It looked worse last year. We, the money that we spent was well-served, and the field needs to be groomed, and our people can do that and will do that, and have that field ready for our students to play.
You know my stance. I support this. It's just, I'm going to be concerned about the money, and that same question's going to go with some of these other ones. So with that, Ayo, thank you.
Anything further? Roll call, Deb, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mary Cogan?
Yes. Up again, Ken. It's a discussion and vote to approve the window repair at the Stone or Westall School referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee. Ken Pacheco. Oh, first motion?
Motion to approve, uh, to, yeah, I'm sorry, to approve. Second.
Our motion is second. Ken?
So the Stone School, I'm sorry, the Westalls, Stone School at Westall, those windows are in, in really good shape compared to the rest of the district windows, and these windows are repairable. So what I'd like to do is repair the windows at Westall so that we don't lose them and have to do a, a complete repair process. It's a proprietary device that, that would be installed inside the windows, along with opening dead stops and any kind of flashing and caulking that would go along with refurbishing those windows in this particular site. It's a, it's a good investment on our part for probably under fifty thousand to do them all, all the windows at one time. Or we could do them piecemeal based on the document that's inside your packet.
Any questions on the windows? Don't.
Is this motion of all of them? Like, if we approve the motion now?
No, you can, you can give me direction here. There's an Alacot menu in the back there. It's about, as I said, it's under fifty thousand to do them all.
Making an amendment that we do them all?
Second.
I have a, I have a amendment by Mr. Aguirre. Do I have a motion, a second on the amendment? I mean, the motion, do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Ken, Mr. Costa?
Second.
Second.
On the amendment.
Any discussion on the amendment? Roll call, Deb, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mary Cogan?
Yes.
Next amendment, a next amendment. Next one is eleven point seven. It's discussion and vote to approve the second quarter revolving fund.
Motion.
I have a motion.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I believe we need to vote on the, we voted on the amendment.
I know. Do we vote on the whole thing?
We got to vote on the whole thing now.
I mean, typically, if the amendment carries, it's all-encompassing.
Typically, if the amendment carries, it's all-encompassing, just by point of order, but.
I'm sorry.
I think that more than, went more than.
If it had failed, it reverts back to the original motion?
Okay.
For a vote, but, procedurally, but.
So we'll go back to?
The chair wants to vote again, we vote again?
No, we're fine. Uh, we'll go back to eleven point seven, which is discussion and vote to approve the second quarter revolving fund. Kevin Almeida, do I have a motion?
So moved with a question.
So moved with a question. I have a motion, a second. Kev?
So, the stone tuition, it says negative forty-four thousand? Is that like?
So we, we received payment from, from one of our cities and towns, I forget which one it was, for a student for this past year. And then we received a letter stating that the student didn't attend, so we had to reimburse the town back.
So other special ed students like that, we paid the bill, did we get any money back?
No, they, they paid us for that student, and to come to find out, the student never attended the school. After they did some research, the student didn't attend the school. So we paid them the money back for that placement.
Because of COVID, or?
Because the student didn't attend this past year. There was.
Was that, was that stone?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
There was miscommunication between the town and, and us, and the student.
It was not because of COVID?
No, no, no. Cause this, this was for the full year this past year.
Miscommunication, not necessarily because of COVID?
No.
Not coming to school?
Nope.
Otherwise, I, I think this, uh, east of schools is still, even with COVID, we're still keeping up at two hundred and some thousand, which is, I'm reading that right, correct?
Yes.
So, we're still healthy and that. All right. With that, Ayew. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I have a motion, a second. Deb, roll call, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetsler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Eleven point eight is a discussion and vote to approve the year-to-date budget report as presented by Kevin Almeida. Do I have a motion, a second?
Make a motion.
A motion?
Second.
Second, I have motion, a second. Any questions on the year-to-date budget report from Mr. Almeida? Kev?
Just, uh, the line items where we have, um, I think it was brought up at the last meeting, uh, related to a person in facilities that's in the budget but not hired, like a analyst or something like that?
Yep.
Where would that money fall out of? Like, is that just in an account?
It's in the professional salaries, though.
So it's just a surplus in there?
Yes.
It doesn't, like, you're not taking that down each meeting?
No.
So we have more than that one position?
Yes.
Do you know what that is, about fifty grand or something?
Yes.
The, um, my concern is just that some of the lines for transfers, like, when are we gonna get those? When we have a surplus, not necessarily when we need the money. So if you can just keep that on your radar, that I've always, in the past, we had quarterly transfers when we knew we were gonna have money, rather than just the need.
Yep.
So if you can just keep that in the front burner, that if we're gonna have a large surplus in one of those things, I think the whole committee should know that ahead of time, so we can decide if we wanna move those money. With that, Ayew. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetsler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Item number twelve is for your information only. We have some retirements.
Motion to accept and place on file, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Roll call, Deb?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetsler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Um, any new business to come before the committee? Kev?
Just one question, I guess. Uh, I just found out that possibly, I'm not sure if this is even the case, but do we have a policy here in the district related to non-disclosure agreements for employees? Do we have any non-disclosure agreements, or like, when a, that, when a person leaves the district? So, if they leave the district and they have to sign something, it's called a non-disclosure agreement? Do we have any of those in the district? Or do we have a policy on that? No?
I, I don't know if we have a policy on non-disclosure. I, it's a legal, um, interaction. I don't know what the policy would be. I don't think there's an M E S C policy, because non-disclosures come through attorneys and bargaining settled agreements.
But do we have any, have we done any non-disclosure agreements in Florida public schools?
In how long, Kev? Last five years?
Four years.
Last four years?
First of all, with respect to, to, if I could help, the, with respect to, to non-disclosure of agreements or, or disclaimers, the, I'm not aware of any policy, uh, for or against it. Uh, I do know that, uh, the, I believe that the, uh, department has used not so much a, a, an agreement in the past, but perhaps a, uh, a statement in, in some type of a, uh, an issue with respect to an individual, that I, I certainly wouldn't be able to discuss in, in open session. Uh, but other than that, uh, n- I'm not aware of any policy that would prohibit it.
So the reason why I ask this, because I've never heard of it, you know, but certainly if we, as a school system, have anybody that's signed a non-disclosure agreement, I think the committee should be aware of the circumstances around such. And, um, so whether it's an executive session item for the future, I just wanna put it out there that if that is the case, I think we need to have a discussion about what they are, what the circumstances around such. With that, Ayew. Thank you.
Okay. Hearing nothing further. Um, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
So moved?
Second.
Second. Uh, Deb, please call the roll, and then we'll have Mr.
Point of order?
Uh, sure.
Can we just hear the reasons for executive session before we vote?
Reasons come first. Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Thanks. Keep an eye on me, Mr. Costa. Go ahead, please.
Your direction, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, first would be national law's chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A seven, to review and approve executive session committee minutes for the December twenty-one, two thousand twenty, regular meeting of the Florida School Committee. Next would be national law's chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A one, to review the open meeting law complaint dated January fifth, two thousand twenty-one filed by Colin Davis, Dias, I'm sorry, regarding the December twenty-one, two thousand twenty regular meeting of the Florida School Committee. The complaint alleges the school committee violated the open meeting law by allowing the superintendent, Matthew Malone, and other unnamed individuals to be present during an executive session of the Florida School Committee. Next, national law's chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all cafeteria employees, the Florida School System represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council ninety-three, Local eleven eighteen, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National law's chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all maintenance employees of the Florida School System, represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council ninety-three, Local eleven eighteen, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Next would be national law's chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all custodial employees of the Florida School System represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local, I'm sorry, Council ninety-three, Local eleven eighteen, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National law's chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all safety and security, uh, employees of the Florida School System represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council ninety-three, Local eleven eighteen, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National law's chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all civil service clerical employees of the Florida School System represented by the Florida Department of Civil Service Clerical Employees Association, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Next would be national law's chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all government program employees, including without limitation paraprofessionals, parent workers, and clerks of the Florida School System that are paid from federal and state grants, and represented by the Florida Public Schools government programs, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National law's chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A one, to discuss complaints brought against a school official. National law's chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation, uh, sh- I'm gonna backtrack on that for one second. Uh, to discuss complaints brought against a school official, as the chair has determined an open session may have a detrimental impact on the litigation position of the city, uh, and the school department. Also, national law's chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiation with non-union personnel, including without limitation, Nicole Gidley Instruction, Instructional Support Liaison. We will reconvene. There may or may not be statements at that time.
Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yeah.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetsler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. In recess.
Good evening. I'd like to call back to order the school committee meeting for Monday, January the eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Har?
Here.
Mr. Hetsler?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
As a result of executive session, are there any motions to be made before the committee this evening?
To make a motion, we approve the executive session committee meetings for the December twenty-first, twenty twenty, regular meeting of the Florida School Committee.
Is a motion made by Mr. Hetsler?
Seconded.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hart. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing done? Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetsler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Are there any other motions?
Motion to approve the contract as negotiated between Nicole Gidley Instruction Support Liaison and the Florida School Committee.
Is a motion made by Mr. Hetsler? Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Hart. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing done? Roll call, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Y- yes.
Mr. Hetsler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
I have a motion to reopen the Clerical Union M O U.
Is a motion made by Mr. Hetsler? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Larrabee. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing done? Roll call, please, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetsler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
I have a motion to approve the amendment to Superintendent Matthew H. Malone's employment contract with respect to section three, compensation, and section nine, termination without cause,[1605.49]